The live meeting of the Bryan City Schools Board of Education to order. Let us stand and start with a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you call the roll, Rob?
Scott Benedict.
Yes.
Cyndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. You have before you the minutes for the regular June meeting as well as the special board meeting. There were two special board meetings. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve them as presented.
All settled.
Cyndra, would you have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll?
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any public participation, so we'll move on to communications. The four county report, Cyndra?
Yes, just a quick one. They've hired a new technical supervisor, Dean Ditmer. So they're excited to put him in place. He's actually a current employee of four county that's just moved into that position. Standard business like we do here, updated some policies, working on summer maintenance, and excited to receive a nice thousand dollar donation from Rifle Industries of pioneer for the robotics program. So it's just a little report, but a few things going on.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to a little presentation about the elementary Golden Bear Running Club. Mr. Osterland?
Ben, we'll have you standing right over here so I can get you on camera. You can put your computer.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, well, thanks for having me today. I got together with Brian Cummings and Julie Cummings here. It's something we've kind of talked about and thought about a little while ago. We've been, Brian and I have been coaching together for a while. We just would really like to bring forth like a program, just kind of introduce kids to the running sports here at Bryan, just kind of get them excited about that. So that's kind of our main focus with that is just kind of get the kids excited about running here, make that lifelong love, kind of reduce all that stuff. Just some of the little basics of running, some things we want to teach them also just basically just get them out and get them moving a little bit here is a big thing as well. So we're looking at starting this up here. Kind of just some timeline we have is the school starts out. We're planning on getting like permission form around, just send that home with parents. It's going to be for third grade through sixth grade. As we kind of see this moving forward, we might expand it as we kind of get a better picture of what our numbers are going to be. Just with some of the other elementary grades, right now we're going to start with some of the older ones here. So third through six before the kids start with junior high sports. We're looking at just Wednesdays right now, going from about mid-September to mid-October. So the dates we have right now are September 12th through October 25th. And we're just going to practice Wednesdays for about an hour. Just like you said, practices are going to be kind of light and fun, teach them some of the basics of running. And then we're also going to have just some optional like competitions throughout. Like we're going to look to set up like a Tough Mudder type course around the area. We're going to team together with junior high cross-country team and either run before or after their meet. They have a home meet during that time. And we also have a time we're going to put together like a track meet as well. So we're looking for the kids to have some fun with it. We're excited to see what kind of participation we get here, what people are interested in. Anyone have any questions about it?
Will there be any fees involved?
No, it's going to be free. We are, Brian Cummings is talking to Bill's locker room right now and just getting some quotes on the T-shirts. We have an optional T-shirt that I think they're going to set up like a store for us where we have all sorts of different options with our, with clothing they can buy. We're going to have a cheaper T-shirt option. With that, we want it to be free and we'd love to have everyone have a T-shirt. So Brian's also got some people he's talking to about maybe potentially being sponsors. So kind of fill some of those kids that maybe can't afford a T-shirt, get them a T-shirt and stuff like that.
Any transportation issues?
We are not, way we see it, we're not going to use the school for transportation. It's all just going to be parent, parent transportation thing. Practices are going to be right after school, so the kids will just be here. Some of the competitions will be maybe a little bit later on after school. So that would just be the parents have to bring them if a kid can't make it to a competition and it's no big deal. It's just kind of a fun forum.
No mandatory requirements, just totally, just try to get the kids enthused?
Yes, no mandatory. If a kid is absent that day though, they, we are not going to allow them to show up for practice after school then. So just kind of same thing we look at with our other sports we have.
You have absolutely no idea on the numbers at this point?
No, I've taught, I kind of got this idea with one of my co-teachers, Sarah Hastings. Her son does a running club in Pettisville, and they've got pretty good participation numbers there, which theirs is, I think kindergarten through sixth grade or something like that. So they've got a wide range, but yeah. Right now, no clue on the numbers wise, so it's, it'll be an interesting thing to see. I know I've had, I've had talks with some other teachers who'd be interested in helping out. So we're just kind of holding on until we get this thing running, then we might open it up to some more of those. And if we do have more volunteers, that's something we need to bring to you guys and get approval.
When do you, you know, get it approved then? When do you foresee getting that word out to, are you going to try to get it out before school starts?
Yeah, yeah. So Brian and I are probably going to meet again here this next week and just make sure we go through everything, see what he has going with his end, and I'll share what I have on my end, and then we'll kind of come together. Yeah, kind of get some of our forms and stuff finalized and everything we can share with people.
Okay.
Good. All right.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the treasurer's reports and recommendations. Mr. Ross.
Thank you. We'll start with our cash reconciliation report for the month ended June 30th, 2018. At Farmers Merchant State Bank, a balance of $3,231,429. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $45,812. Investments at Star Ohio, $803,156. At Morgan Stanley, $4,694,137. At State Bank, $6,234,689. And Star Ohio plus $2,506,057. Petty cash funds total, $4,500. So our balance at the end of June was $17,428,156. Our individual funds, our general fund ended the year with a balance of $12,948,862. Our bond retirement fund, a balance of $886,217. And our permanent improvement fund, $2,7,227. Our construction fund, local share, had a balance of $448,238. And our project maintenance fund, O-34 Fund, $503,483. Those are some of our major funds. Once again, our funds totaled $17,428,156. Our, just to give a recap of fiscal year 2018, our revenues totaled $21,178,747. Our expenses totaled $20,773,751. So we had a surplus for the year of $404,996. Any questions on those reports?
Not on those, Rob, but one as it pertains to the building project. Where do we sit on that in terms of closing that out? How much more do we have to go?
Finishing up the projects out here from this summer. There's still a few things at the elementary building. They're working on the HBAC system, a few other light items. Rudolph Libby hasn't presented any draws lately. So everything that we owe, we still owe the architect some money on his contract. We owe Regency Construction some money. We owe Stan and Associates some money, and then Rudolph Libby. So those are the four areas or four contractors that we owe.
With the exception of the work that is in process right now though, all the other contractors or subcontractors to the project, they've all been taken care of at this point pretty much.
For the most part, there's still some retainage on the Washington and High School demolition projects. Those, those two items also are outstanding, just that there's some retainage there until they get everything cleaned up. There's some rocks that need cleaned up and need smoothed out a little bit, some reseating. So we're getting there, but it's kind of a slow process, but we're crawling to the finish line.
It'll take a little time.
Yeah. There are no appropriation modifications this month due to us being the, kind of in between the point where we establish our temporary appropriations, and then next month we'll establish our permanent appropriations for the year. So we'll move on, just some housekeeping here for the upcoming school year. We're going to establish change funds for the various buildings. $2,000 for high school athletics for Mr. Ruffer. $200 for junior high concessions, that should read for Mr. Arnold. $250 for Janelle Combs for concessions. $200 for cafeteria. $200 for the pre-K to five building office, and $50 for the six to twelve building office. Petty cash funds for this office, my office, $500 for the year, and $4,000 for high school athletics. We have a service agreement with Montpelier Exempted Village Schools for mental health supervisory services. We're sharing that among the other districts in the county, is that correct, Ben? Donations this month from the Bryan Elementary PTO, $7,600 donation to the elementary teachers for supplies, and also from Bryan Elementary PTO, $1,900 for the elementary principal funds. From the Academic Booster Club, $2,000 to each the middle high school building for assemblies as well as the elementary building for assemblies. And that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you very much, Rob. Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report and recommendations.
So moved.
Deb, would we have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, Rob?
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our old business, I'm not aware of any at this time. So moving on to new business, we'll ask for the superintendent's recommendations and reports.
So thank you very much. This month, under administrative recommendations, first of all, we have approval of the administrative compensation and benefits schedule as per Exhibit E. We have approval of the 2018-19 student handbooks. We have one for K-12 with addendums for each building. We have the preschool student handbook, and then we have the athletic handbook. And those were shared also through Exhibits F, G, and H. I asked the board for approval of the high school string orchestra trip for this March of 2019 during spring break. They are requesting to be able to travel to Disney for a coaching and kind of a clinic in strings, working with the producers at Disney. And that, the details of those trip are in Exhibit I. I would like to ask the board to pull for the time being the MOU with Williams County Job and Family Services, only because there have been some revisions recommended by our attorney that I haven't been able to share, and I will do so this week, so we could see that come back next month for approval. And then also I ask for approval of the MOU with St. Patrick's School. This is a exhibit that I shared with you in hard copy form. This has been written by our attorney, and it covers what we've been discussing as far as the state has informed us that it is not, we are not able to allow St. Patrick's students to attend our school unless we have a written contract in place. So per state instructions, our attorney has drafted this contract, which basically puts into writing what we've been doing for as many years as I've been with the district. Students who attend St. Pat's will be allowed to take classes at Bryan City Schools in the areas of band, chorus, orchestra, so our music programs, and physical education. The one thing that this, that this does not, or is exempted, is any student who is on the John Peterson Scholarship, which by state rules, they are not allowed to attend both. So again, this agreement just clearly outlines what we've already been doing up to today, just as a directive from ODE. And then I would ask that the board approve the request of Mr. Osterland and his volunteers for the newly established Bryan Elementary Golden Bear Running Club. As Mr. Rossworm said, there are some annual actions for transportation. Bus stop locations is established by the transportation supervisor for the upcoming 18-19 school year. Authorization to relocate those stop locations for the transportation supervisor for the 18-19 school year. And that we establish that payment in lieu of transportation at the rate that ODE sets for the 18-19 school year in the event that transportation by our school fleet is impractical within the confines of the ORC. And then finally, I ask for a resolution to formally recognize our district support organizations. We annually recognize and approve the Bryan Athletic Boosters, the Bryan Music Boosters, the Bryan Academic Boosters, and the Bryan Elementary PTO. And I'll entertain any questions that the board may have.
Any questions? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
So moved.
Deb, would I have a second?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, Rob?
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under personnel recommendations, we're finishing up and getting really close to being set for the new year. I would like to recommend, first of all, a three-year administrative contract beginning August 1st of 2019 for Christine Thormeyer as our pre-K to five administrator.
All settled.
All right, I have a motion.
So moved that recommendation.
Cyndra?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, Rob?
Scott.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Oh, I'm staying.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Next, under personnel, I'd like to recommend a three-year administrative contract beginning August 1st, 2019 for Karen Cox as Director of Elementary Education. Steve Alspaugh is our six to twelve administrator. Amy Dominic is pre-K to five administrator, and Joe Beck is transportation supervisor. I would like to recommend a retire, rehire, one-year limited contract for Ned Ruffer as our maintenance director and supervisor. I asked the board to approve contract staff for Dee Collins. Dee works on our website and social media, up to 10 hours per week. She's paid at the tutor rate, and that's for the 18-19 school year. One-year limited teaching contracts for the 18-19 school year for Lindsay Stack as fourth grade intervention specialist at the bachelor's level, zero years experience. Samantha Fowles, middle school, high school science teacher at the bachelor's level, zero years experience. Heather Crum is intervention specialist, bachelor's level, five years experience. Leah Sturt, four or five intervention specialist at the bachelor's level, zero years experience. Tracy Cook, elementary art teacher, bachelor's level, one year experience. And Nicole Hurst, preschool teacher, bachelor's level, at two years experience. What you see listed under classified personnel are our educational aides. Some of them are transfers, some of them are slight adjustments in time, either less time than they had last year or more time than they had last year. So we're going to ask the board to approve all of our educational aides, and I'm going to go through these as quickly as I can. Carol Edenhour, AM/PM preschool aide, two hours Monday and 6.75 hours Tuesday through Friday. Peggy Wentz and Terry Long is the same, AM/PM preschool aide, the same hours as Carol. Victoria Jeanette, AM preschool one-on-one aide, 5.5 hours Tuesday through Friday. Heather Bates, one-on-one aide at the preschool, 5.5 hours Tuesday through Friday. Christine Kiesacker, one-on-two aide, 4.5 hours Tuesday through Friday at the preschool. Emily Salmon's preschool one-on-one, five hours per day Tuesday through Friday. Sherry Robinson, one-on-one preschool aide, 4.25 hours Tuesday through Friday. Kelly Myers, kindergarten aide, 5.5 hours. Candy Retcher, AM cubter garden, and Kelly Dean, PM cubter garden, each at 5.75 hours per day. Sherry Fuica, library aide, pre-K to five, 5.75 hours per day. Tiffany Howler, pre-K to five aide, eight hours per day. Cindy Sinclair, kindergarten aide, 5.5 hours per day. Ashley McCandless, kindergarten aide, 5.5 hours per day. Shelley Duran, one-on-two aide, 6.5 hours per day. Robin Horg, one-on-two aide, 7.5 hours per day. Chastity Lanius, cross-categorical aide, 7.75 hours per day. Barbara, one-on-one, eight hours per day. Amy Horniac, cross-categorical aide, eight hours per day. Taryn Walls, sensory aide, along with Amanda Figgins, each at 5.75 hours per day. Teresa Keller, one-on-two aide, eight hours per day. Maria Panico, one-on-one aide, 7.25 hours per day. Mary Myers, one-on-two aide, 5.75 hours. Maria Carrickson, one-on-three aide, 5.75 hours. Lauren Ruelis, one-on-one aide, 5.5 hours. Michelle Missler, pre-K to five aide, 5.5 hours. Bridget Smith, pre-K to five aide, 4.75 hours. Pam Sickmiller, cross-categorical aide, along with Angie Lemons, both at eight hours per day. Aubrey Dixon, one-on-two aide, eight hours a day. Donna Mann, cross-categorical aide, 7.5 hours per day. Jennifer Sampson, pre-K to five aide, 5.25 hours. Lydia Showalter, pre-K to five aide, five hours per day. Jennifer Andrews, one-on-two aide, eight hours per day. Carolyn Stanball, one-on-one aide, eight hours per day. Nancy Michael, one-on-one, 5.75 hours per day. Carrie Deckrash, one-on-two, 7.25 hours per day. Janelle Combs, six to twelve aide, eight hours a day. Schuhlenberg, six to twelve aide, 7.75 hours per day. Julie Mastin, six to twelve, eight hours per day. Kathy Lamberson, MH, one-on-two aide, seven hours per day. Tammy Elliott, one-on-two aide, eight hours per day. Carrie Dargarts, one-on-one, 7.75 hours per day. Dee Herman, one-on-one aide, 7.5 hours per day. Kathy Frank, one-on-one, eight hours a day. Lori Grimm, six to twelve MH aide, 7.5 hours per day. Judy Smith, one-on-one, 7.75 hours per day. Pam Smith, six to twelve aide, eight hours per day. Sharie Terrell, six to twelve aide, 5.5 hours per day. Cindy Haas, library aide, 5.75 hours per day. Linda Piper, six to twelve aide, 5.75 hours per day. Kathy Saladin, six to twelve aide, 4.75 hours per day. Adrian Mojica, library aide, 5.5 hours per day. John Ely, in-school suspension aide, 5.75 hours per day. And Paula Memmer-Crites, in-school suspension aide, 4.75 hours per day. Kim Armbruster, library aide, 5.75 hours. Michael Berlin, study hall aide, five hours per day. And Kim Hisong, study hall aide, 4.75 hours per day. Again, if you notice, the one-on-twos, one-on-threes, one-on-ones, or the special education units, those are all related to students who have distinct needs and have those aides with them at all times during the day. The general classroom special ed aides are listed, as well as recess and bus duty, and we have aides riding buses to help with safety and control on the buses. So it's an extensive list, but annually, we ask our administrators to reassign, reshuffle, look at our needs, look at our student needs, and make those fit. New hire classified staff because we have a late resignation. Kathleen Ottenweller, preschool one-on-two aide, 4.5 hours per day Tuesday through Friday. Salary scheduled placement for the upcoming school year, effective August 1st. Amber Franzdorf will be moving to a master's plus 20 level, and Amy Von Dalen to a master's level. And we congratulate and thank those teachers for continuing their education over the summer. Change in pay rate effective August 1st. Tasha Mufeld, accounting clerk, to $18.21 per hour, and Lindsey Smith, transportation, maintenance, curriculum, IT, and food service director secretary, to $16.17 per hour. I asked the board to approve an unpaid educational leave for the 18-19 school year for Heidi Stark. Heidi Stark has requested this leave so that she can attend some different professional development throughout the year. After consulting with our school attorney, we request this unpaid educational leave for the 18-19 school year. Supplemental contracts for the 18-19 school year, these are some changes to what we previously approved in May. So these reflect cross-country junior high coach Larry Kennedy at 10%. JV boys soccer coach Shane Pitts at 13%. Assistant coach, boys soccer, Adam, this is a new one for me, so I'm going to go out on a limb. Adam Sabazik at 6.5%. And eighth grade class advisor, Heidi Brown. Athletic volunteers, Dylan Wagner for football. For our Bryan Elementary Golden Bear Running Club, if approved, Ben Osterland, Brian Cummings, and Julie Cummings. And then finally, we have our resignations. Bridget Ruffer, fifth grade intervention teacher, and this is a date change. This should be effective July 31st. Audra Manriquez, elementary art teacher, effective August 1st. Christian Groob, junior high cross-country coach, effective July 23rd. And Brenda Vollmuth, as I mentioned earlier, paraprofessional aide, effective July 9th. Questions from the board?
All right, if there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the relatively lengthy list of personnel recommendations presented by Mrs. Savage.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mike, Scott, was the motion?
Scott.
Yes.
Cyndra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
Points of information, Mrs. Savage.
Our next Board of Education meeting at this point is scheduled for August 20th, 2018. I reserve the right, if we have any late hires or late resignations. I'm crossing my fingers that we don't, but just in case, we may have to call a special meeting prior to school starting because this is after our students have returned. So just an FYI, just kind of to keep, keep you in the loop. But like I said, as of today, we are full. As of today, we have all of our hires complete with the exception of one aide position. And again, we're in the process of some people transferring into the open position from the resignation. So that's the only personnel move at this point that I expect. We do have a business advisory committee will meet in August. We'll set that date later, and LPDC meeting is yet to be determined. I don't have any legislative updates. I don't know, Rob, if you've heard anything new coming out of Columbus lately.
Pretty quiet for the summer.
With summer break going on for the legislators as well. We're just working on submitting our data for EMIS reporting, which drives our school funding. So I know that we are working hard at making sure that that data is correct. It not only drives the funding, but it also drives the school grade card, which will be released probably around the next time we have our board meeting in August, so.
What is the first day of school for students?
The first day of school for students is August 15th.
Fifteenth.
The first day of school for our teachers report back, our staff reports back, August 13th. So it is quickly approaching.
Is that the day that we are invited to, the 13th?
The 13th, well, actually, the 14th will be our back-to-school breakfast.
I had written down the 14th.
Yep.
You just said 13th, so I thought maybe I was wrong.
Staff reports on the 13th, but we're going to do our back-to-school breakfast on Tuesday, the 14th. And we would invite all of our board members to attend, and that'll start at 8 o'clock. And that will be held at the six to twelve building this year. Also, just some dates to throw out for our public and our viewers that are watching at home. On August 9th, both buildings will be open. I believe it's from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for registration days. Students and parents can come in, they can get their students registered, they can get assistance with filling out the register. They can get assistance with filling out the registration forms online. They can tour the buildings, they can get their schedules, they can get their class assignments for the elementary. They'll find out who their teachers are on that day. We'll just take care of the transportation, we'll take care of everything, a one-stop shop. And that's on Thursday, August 9th. And then on Monday, August 13th, in the evening, both buildings will also be open for the more traditional open house. That will be when teachers are present to just be in their classrooms and have parents come meet the teachers. And again, have a chance to tour the building and see where their classrooms are. And then, as I shared, the first day of school for students is August 15th.
Ain't very far off.
It's not very far off, no.
Okay, anything else can be done? If not, I'm not aware of any need for executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one more thing I would like to bring up, and I didn't know whether to bring it up during your financial thing about some outstanding for the Elementary School of Washington and the high school for cleaning up the rocks and reseeding.
Mm-hmm.
What is the, what is happening with both of those properties right now? Because they are, they are just an awful mess to look at. I mean, there is, there is no grass growing.
Yep, we've shared that, I would tell you, we've shared that with the contractor, the supervisor, Rudolph Libby.
Yeah.
They've contacted the subcontractor that did the initial work. They've told them that it's not accepted by the owners.
Okay.
And it's their responsibility to make it right.
Okay.
So we're in that process.
That's all I wanted to know.
And as Rob said, it's slow.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it was in the process somewhere. I hadn't heard anything about it. But it's just, every day, I'm down at the hospital or driving by, it's just, it's just.
Out of Washington, one of the custodians started to mow with one of our mowers, and it was so rough, he had to stop.
Yeah, and it's just a.
Plus, it stopped raining shortly after we seeded it.
Right.
And we just didn't get a real.
Well, at this point, I think we would probably wait till later in August, towards the fall to do it. But I think it needs to be completely redone. I mean, it's, it's awful.
Here's just.
And it just looks, it looks bad from our standpoint, as custodians of that property, of those properties.
One of the things, and this is not generally, I guess, recognized by the public, and that's fine, but just to give a little explanation. The Ohio EPA, on a site, once it goes over a certain number of acreage, doesn't make any difference what time of the year it is, they expect you to seed it. If nothing else, it's a temporary seeding, and what Rob alluded to is correct. I mean, by the time they got done with the project where it was ready to seed, it was already too, really too late into the summertime. So literally, they almost go through the motions of attempting to seed it. If they get lucky, you get the rain and the grass grows, that's fine. But realistically, you know, they were going to have to rip it up and probably reseed it by virtue of the fact that it was just the summertime, it was awful dry, we haven't had a lot of rain. So, you know, to really establish grass wasn't going to be very successful.
Well, that's, and that's, they can say that all they want, but I don't buy that at all. I mean, even if nothing else, it would have not grown at all, and it would have just been, but the mix that they put down, I mean, it was, it was clearly, there was no grass seed in it. It just, it's just weeds. I walked out on it. I mean, I was over at the hospital the other day working on some equipment, walked across the street just to look at it, and there is no grass. So you can't tell me that I know that it's, you know, it's part of the protocol just to go through the motion to do it. But they could have at least had a better mix of product.
And before that, just to clean up all the rocks and the wire, I know that the, again, because I walk past there frequently as well, there was just so much junk left over from that. Again, I'm not a grass specialist, but it seems like it's going to be impossible to grow much of anything other than weed until they go back and really, really clean it up.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to bring that, to make sure that that was in the process.
It has been.
All of that has been addressed with.
Like I say, there's, there's retainage on both projects.
Good.
Contractors not received payment, so.
Okay, that's all I have to tell you.
Okay, with that, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Syndra, do it. All right, Mike's second. Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.